All right. Good evening. I will call to order the November 10th regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Welcome. Thanks for joining us virtually this evening. First order of business is that I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Present.
Danielson?
Present.
Demay?
Here.
Glashin?
Here.
Sager?
Here.
Westerman here. Chair Weinhegen.
Here. Motion carries. Item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Glashin?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Motion carries. It'll take us to item 2.1, student recognition. And it is awesome to see some of our students on our... Is this a Google Meet? So on our Google Meet screen today? Welcome, everyone. Thanks for joining us. And I think I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Galvin and Mr. Fink to recognize our incredible student athletes.
Yeah, thank you for having us, School Board. It's Jim Galvin, A.D. at Moundsview High School. It's been a great fall season for our sports and activities. We're blessed that you guys helped provide us the opportunity to participate this fall. It's been a safe place for our students to be. And I'm honored tonight to introduce you to representatives from three of our section championship teams. And we'll go in this order. I'll have the kids introduce themselves and talk for a few seconds about their season. We've got our section champion, boys cross-country team, then our section championship, boys soccer team, and finally, our section championship, girls tennis team. And then we'll turn it over to Chris Fink. So, boys cross-country.
Hey, guys. I'm Matt.
And I'm Charlie. And first off, we were just really grateful to have a season this year and wanted to start on time. We know football obviously started late, and that wasn't something we had to deal with. Our season started a little rough this year because we had no spectators allowed. And in cross-country, that makes the races a lot harder. And we were also only racing against 24 other kids per race, whereas a normal race could be up to 300 runners. So we had to get accustomed to that at the beginning of the season. Not to mention, we brought on six new varsity runners this year from our state champion team last year.
Um, yeah. So then, once we kind of got adjusted to the things that Charlie said, once we were in the postseason, things really started looking up for us. So at our conference meet, we placed fifth, which we knew was a good showing. But we also knew that we still had some pieces of the team that needed to come together. And then, a week and a half later, at our section meet, they... We ended up doing really well, obviously, winning the meet. And we were really excited because our training was designed for us to peak at that meet. And with our results from that meet comparable to the teams that beat us earlier in the year, we would have likely have beaten those teams if we had faced them in our section. So overall, Charlie and I and the rest of the team were very thankful to have somewhat of a normal season and to finish the way that we did. So.
Thanks, guys. Boys soccer. Ben, are you there?
Hello? Yeah, I'm here. My name's Ben Frans. I was part of the boys soccer team. I'm also super thankful that we were able to have a season. We knew going into the year that if we had the chance, we had a good team and that we could do something special. We had a lot of young kids, so that was a bit of a challenge. And we had a slow start at first. But as the season progressed, we kind of learned how to play together as a team, and we started to become really successful. And I give a lot of credit to our coach, Joe Warren. He helped us make a lot of adjustments and helped us come together as a team. And that helped a lot. And then, going into sections, we were extra motivated because last season, lost in the final to St. Paul Central. And we got the chance to play them again in the semifinals. And so that was a super fun game. And that was felt really good to win. And then going into the final, we were the lower seed, so we were a bit of an underdog. But we knew that if we played well, we could beat them. And we did so. And so, it was just a really fun season. And I'm glad we got to have it because we weren't sure with COVID and everything.
And Ben, what was the score of that section championship game against the number one seed?
Uh, it was 5-1.
Outstanding victory. Thank you, Ben. Girls tennis. Sanjana and Katia?
Um, I don't know if Kat is here, but yes, I'm Sanjana. I was one of the captains for this year. Again, we were very fortunate to have a season. I think tennis was probably one of the sports that was the easiest decision to make since we're already a pretty low-contact sport. And last year, we had such a great season, winning third. So this year, we had many goals of going to the state champion or winning the state championship at least. But unfortunately, we couldn't have our state tournament. So yeah, entering the season, we started off very strong. We had two new members come to varsity, which was super exciting. We've kind of had the same team the last three years. Having new people was definitely something fun to have. Yeah, we played very well. Our rival, Madam Media, seeing them at the section championship was... Beating them at least was probably one of the best in the world since they're a very interesting team to play against. So yeah, we had a very great season, and I'm excited to see what happens next year.
Thank you, Mustangs. I appreciate it. Chris Fink, over to you.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Yes, you know, we're really thankful that we were allowed to participate in as many activities we could possibly do for this fall. And some are still ongoing. And, you know, it was great to see the kids. I mean, we had record number of kids coming out for different sports. And I think part of it is, you know, for the school allowing us to do this for the kids, for the social-emotional piece. And, you know, for both Jim and I, we're just thankful because, well, number one, it's what we like to do. And number two, just watching the kids be able to do something they love to do and try to do it in the safest manner possible. And so, we're really thankful for that. So we have representatives today from girls swim, boys football, and girls cross-country. So Elizabeth, why don't you get us started with girls cross-country?
Um, I'm Elizabeth Van Loon. I'm one of the captains for Irondale Girls Cross-Country this year and next year. And we did a really good job this year with keeping masks and social distancing. There was a lot of families on the girls and guys team that weren't sure they would be comfortable with sports this year. But then we were able to make it safe enough and still do fun things, like we did a social distance movie night on the turf. So we were still getting team building in. Our team got eighth in conference, and we got fifth in sections even though we came in ranked 10th. So we exceeded expectations there. And we had one girl runner and one guy runner make it to state.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Mazzy, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here. Should I go?
You can go.
All right. Um, my name's Mazzy Coke, and I am a captain. I'm a junior as well. And we had a fantastic season this year. The attitudes were super, super high. Everyone was just very thankful to be there and just super happy. So the spirits were high. We all had a ton of fun. We were super, super thankful for our new pool. Everyone greatly appreciates it. We had just an awesome season. So I thought it was one of the best seasons yet, honestly. Even though we were faced with lots of challenges, it obviously wasn't a normal season, but we definitely made the most of it. And we are all so thankful that we got a season. So because JV Conference was canceled, oh, they had a dual meet against Forest Lake. So that was their last meet, and they all swam really well. And then we had sections, uh, which went really well, too. We had five girls qualify for state this year, which is awesome. One diver and four swimmers. We have a new school record that was re-broken from last year. And we have three all-conference girls, one diver and two swimmers. So it was a great season, and we are all very thankful.
Thanks, Maz. Griff, you're the last.
All right. Well, my name is Griffin Barasa. I'm a senior at Irondale High School. And I play football. I'm on the football team. And like everyone else has been saying, super thankful, super grateful that we got to play. I mean, I've been playing with these guys since third grade. And it was, out of these past four years at Irondale, like this was probably the craziest and one of the most happy, like, football team. Like, it's just fun to be around, be around the guys still and still be able to compete on the field. So like, some things that like helped us throughout the season were was... We had, we still had our, our, our food coordinator, his name is Mr. Hulowski. He, he got us food every, every Thursday before the game, and we ate at social distance. And that, that really helps us. And it gets us bonded more, I guess. I mean, our season was okay. We, uh, we didn't start, we didn't, we didn't start out too, too good. But we, we smoked Park Center. That's always nice. And then, lost to Spring Lake Park. Unfortunately, I got injured. But, uh, I hope maybe be back for sections. So, uh, and another thing is, Fink helped us out a lot. We lost a game to Coon Rapids and on a Wednesday, I believe. And we found a game like that day. And that was, that was something really special to know that we can still, still have another game because it's, it could have been our, could have been our last game. We didn't even know. We had neck guards. We got, we got cool, like, little gray, gray neck guards for, or face shield things. Those are cool. And those, those are nice. All the, all the guys like that. We still, I mean, like was Fink was saying, we had a lot of kids show out. There was about 30 kids on the freshman team. And that's something that's like unbelievable. Like, that's, that's something that, that you look at and you're just like, wow. And you're just like, want to like give to those kids. And we did have a lot of guys play varsity minutes, a lot of guys that maybe didn't know, but they kept on working. And that's, that's credit to our, like, players as well as the coaches. So it was, uh... Yeah, like, like I said, it was, it was a good year. We had good leaders on offense and defense. One of our defensive players, top 10 in tackles, I believe, right now. Maybe, so, I mean, it's only, only positive. So hopefully, hopefully, the next year, they can, they can keep it up. So, thank you.
Well, that's wonderful. Anybody else, Chris?
Nope, that's good. We're all good here.
Well, blown away. As we often are, I feel like this is a drop-the-mic moment of our meetings. And it feels like we should just, like, scratch the rest of the meeting and move on. So Brady and Bridget, you've got a tall order in presenting the audit later tonight, following these great reports. Just want to thank and congratulate all of our, our young people who have joined us tonight. You have shown incredible resilience through what is a really difficult time. So know that we recognize that. We appreciate the energy that you're bringing to this and how you're showing up and representing our, our school district. I want to thank our coaches, parents, who have been on this ride with you up to this point. And then a huge thanks to Chris and to Jim for your leadership in helping us get here. I think it's a testament to, to the work you've done that has allowed us to operationalize in a safe way these activities over the course of the fall. So I certainly heard the, the value and the benefit and the excitement in the voices of our students. And we really appreciate the work that, that all of you are doing. Thank you.
I'll echo that, Jonathan. Congratulations to all of our student athletes. And Chris and Jim, if you could just talk briefly about the other activities that happened at your schools as well. I know Irondale did a play outside socially-distanced with masks on. And choir had one brief concert. And it sounds like maybe orchestra performed for Joanna Shores. Anyway, it just is great to hear from the student athletes, but also hear what other activities happened at the high schools this fall.
Jim, you first or me?
Go ahead, Chris.
Well, you know, one of the fun things about, you know, you kind of look at these trying times as, you know, what are we going to do to make it special for the kids? So the fun part of my position is challenging people to come up with creative ideas that they can do, that the kids are going to enjoy. All right? And a lot of coaches kind of, oh, they get a little nervous about that. But once they do it, I think they figure out that the whole reason we're doing these activities anyway isn't really the end score of the game. It's more of the enjoyment that the kids have and the memories that the kids have. So our drama did an outside performance in the back of the school. I had to talk to all the neighbors to make sure that they were okay with this because I didn't want them complaining. And we'd have people drive by in cars and stop and watch a little bit, then keep going. It was just a creative way that our drama department went out and allowed the kids to do something they love to do. Because at that particular time, we were really restricted of doing anything indoors. So we got creative, looked outside of the box, and our drama instructor came up with that crazy idea, which turned out to be fantastic. We challenged our music department, our band and orchestra, to reach out to the community members and be able to perform for, in a safe manner, for people in the community. And that has really been a huge plus, not only for the kids, because I think they value not only playing, but the community in general sees the school a little bit different when those things happen. So we're trying to do some of those things, look outside of the box on what we can and can't do. And, you know, and then just put in protocols in place to, for safety for the kids. And, you know, both Jim and I both have to do that with almost everything. If it's scheduling to, you know, how do we, how do we get this to be safe? And, you know, run it by a bunch of other people. And that's kind of what we do each day. So, I don't know, Jim, you have anything?
Well, yeah, you know, it's, it's been a challenge in many ways, but we see great things happen from these opportunities. And what's one of the things for activities, I think about science olympiad and math team and drama, how they've been able to adapt everything they do and do things virtually. You know, it flies under the radar because I'm not seeing those kids coming into the building or attending their, their competitions and stuff. But they're doing everything virtually. And it's been pretty special. We're hoping we can keep going. And, and some are bringing small groups in after school to do things in the, in the classrooms and stuff. And, and yeah, some of our music groups were invited to Presbyterian homes, I believe, to perform out on the grass on that week that we had 70-degree weather. Our student council had a pretend homecoming week where kids came into the building at night in groups and decorated the hallways. They had a movie night out in the stadium, which was canceled because there's a snow. But they moved it to one of the gyms and put cones down on the floor where all the kids could sit. And they're, 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 you know, they're doing some incredible things that a lot of us couldn't come up with without these kids. So it's been, it's been a special year.
Well, great. Thanks to you both. And, and again, to our, our students who joined us tonight. We appreciate the time and the updates and are really proud of the work that you've done. Look forward to watching you through the rest of your, your school year. We're going to move to item 2.2, open forum. No public comment this evening. We did receive one really specific question that the superintendent has followed up on offline. It'll take us to item 2.3, announcements. Shawna will acknowledge the gifts.
Thank you, Jonathan. There were 14 gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $1,276. And there were 23 gifts for the Ralph Rieder food shelf this period for a total of $49,616. It is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great. Thank you. Other announcements, upcoming meeting dates, Thursday, December 3rd, a work session of the board at 6:00 P.M. And Tuesday, December 8th, a regular meeting at 7:00 P.M. of the board, which will be the last meeting of our calendar year. That brings us to item 2.4, superintendent's report. Superintendent Lennox?
Yeah, thanks, Jonathan. I'm actually going to cede my time now because I'm going to be presenting later in the agenda.
All right. We will move to item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and doubly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Glashin?
Aye.
Sager? Sager? Mary Jo, I think you're on mute. Uh, Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. I couldn't get my mouse to move. I'm sorry.
Got it. Got it, Mary Jo.
No worries. Aye. Motion carries. I will note that there appears to be a scrum in my upstairs. I am single parenting tonight. So if you hear my kids wrestling each other, welcome to pandemic meeting. I will move to item 4.1, 2019-2020 audit report, and ask Bridget and Brady to report.
Good evening. Thank you, Jonathan. I'm joined tonight by Jackie Heagle from our auditing firm of MMKR. And Jackie's here this evening to present to you our 2019-2020 audit results. Jackie?
All right. Well, thank you. As Bridget said, I'm here to present the audit results for the year ended June 30th, 2020. Overall, it was a very good audit, as you'll see as we go through the results of the audit. Just to give a little background, the fieldwork took place in about mid-September. And then from that time to now, we're wrapping up the audit and preparing the financial report to get to the audit results tonight that will be presented. One comment before I get into the presentation that I would like to make relates with the plan, scope, and timing of the audit. Um, I just think it's important to comment on that this year with COVID-19 and the impact that it has had on the audit and how we all operate these days. I just think it's important to comment that, you know, your district's audit was still completed in the same timeframe as it has been completed every year. I'm still here at the November School Board meeting, presenting the results of the audit. So before I started my presentation, I just want to compliment your district's finance department, as well as the other staff we work with at the district in getting that audit completed timely in these challenging times. So like I said, I just think that's important to comment on, based on the challenging times we're all faced with these days. So I think everyone should see the presentation that Brady has up now. If you want to flip to the next slide, Brady, I'll go into just talking a little bit about our role as auditors. We're here to issue an opinion on the basic financial statements. Since your district does receive more than $750,000 in federal awards, we do complete a separate, single audit over those federal dollars. And then also, as part of our audit, we issue an opinion over the internal controls and compliance with the financial statement audits, with that federal single audit, and as well as with the Minnesota state laws and regulations. Let's go onto the next slide, then. The summarizes the results of the audit. For the current year, we issued an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements. That's also known as a clean opinion, or it's the top opinion you can get. It's the opinion you're looking for as part of an audit. There is, in the opinion, a paragraph talking about an emphasis of matter with GASB 84. In the current year, district was required to implement a new GASB standard relating with fiduciary activities. This didn't have a significant impact on your financials, but it did have a small change. The scholarship fund, which used to be reported as a fiduciary fund, is now required to be reported as part of the general fund of the financial statements. So a small change when you're looking at your financials there. For the opinions over the internal controls and compliance with the financial statement audit, we had no material weaknesses in internal controls and no compliance findings to report. And we also issued a clean opinion on that schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And on to the next slide, then. As part of our audit with the internal controls and compliance over that single audit area, we did have the one comment to report on as part of our audit in the federal programs we tested related with the child, child nutrition cluster federal program area. And the one comment we had there in the procurement area was just making sure that the district is awarding all contracts based on sealed bids or quotations as required by the uniform guidance. So the federal government, when you're spending money with the federal government, there are thresholds that trigger when you have to do a quote or a bid similar to the Minnesota legal compliance guidance. So just making sure that the district is reviewing the changes that recently with the uniform guidance have happened in that area and making sure that's being reviewed going forward. Before our testing with the Minnesota legal compliance audit, we had no findings to report in that area. So the next several slides I'll walk through summarizes some of the financial results of the audit. Starting with this first one shows a graph of the statewide unrestricted operating fund balance as a percentage of the operating expenditures. For the 2019 year, Moundsview ended at about 20.7%, and that was compared to a statewide average of 19.9%. Um, you saw just a slight increase this year, ending the year 2020 at the 21.3%. And as of today, there is no statewide data available to compare that to. The next slide here shows a table summarizing the governmental funds revenue per student ADM served at the district. It includes some statewide and some metro area averages for the 2018 and the 2019 year. The statewide averages aren't available yet for 2020. For the 2020 fiscal year, though, as a district, you ended the revenue per ADM of the $16,001.6. You saw an increase in that of about $285 per ADM. Most of that revenue increase is in that general fund area, which is the top part of that table. The general fund saw an increase of about $370 per ADM. Most of that in the state sources related with the 2% increase in the basic formula allowance. The district served more students in the current year and also saw some increase in the special education funding received. The next table is a similar table. Onto the next slide, showing the governmental fund expenditures for student ADM served. So for the 2020 year, the district ended at the $16,001.8 of expenditures per ADM served. That was an increase of about $320 per ADM. So you're seeing a similar increase in the expenditures as you saw on the revenue side. Most of that was in the general fund area, the top part of that table. You're seeing some increases in the special education instruction area and also in the pupil support service area. Moving on to the next slide, these next few focus specifically on the general fund of the district, which is the main operating fund. For the 2020 fiscal year, the total fund balance of the general fund ended at about $29.9 million. That was an increase of about $680,000 from the prior year. And that was compared to a budgeted decrease of about $1.4 million. The unassigned fund balance in the general fund ended at about $25.5 million, which is roughly 16% of the annual expenditures for two months of operations. The next slide here summarizes the ADM and the pupil unit served by the district for the past five years. For the 2020 year, the district served $11,715, increase of about $60 ADM from the previous year. So as you can see from this graph, the enrollment has been stable up through the 2020 fiscal year. This next graph I have here summarizes the general fund revenue, shows the current year actual compared to the budget, as well as a bar of the prior year actual. Overall, the general fund revenues were about $1.2 million over budget. A lot of that was in the state source area. Most of that related to just special education funding coming in more than anticipated. And then the overall general fund revenues increased about $4.6 million from the prior year. Most of that was also in that state source area, similar to what I've already commented on. There was improvements in that general education funding formula allowance. There was some increase... funding formula allowance. There was some increase in special education funding and overall the district served in more students than the previous year. This next graph summarizes the general fund expenditures showing current year actual compared to prior year and also compared to budget. The total general fund expenditures ended the year about nine hundred thousand under budget. Uh, that budget variance was spread across various programs and object categories. Uh, most of it was in the purchase service area. Um, the district saw some savings in the utilities area in the two thousand and twenty year. And overall saw an increase in expenditures of about four million from the prior year, and that was mainly in the salary and benefit area just due to contractual increases. This next graph I have here summarizes the other operating funds, so the food service special revenue fund and the community service special revenue fund. Uh, the food service fund ended the year with a decrease in fund balance of about three hundred and fourteen thousand. A lot of that decreases due to program changes as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and serving students, you know, in that time period of March through June. But the year-end fund balance was at about one point three million, which is about twenty-three percent of the operations of the fund. And then the community service fund saw a decrease in fund balance of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand during the current year. Um, I do just want to note that in this community service fund area, there are several restricted fund balance components. So while your total equity is positive in this fund, um, you should be aware that the category restricted for that early childhood family education program is negative of about one point five million. So that's something the district should be aware of and be reviewing the program changes in that area and address it moving forward. My last slide, just in closing, just to summarize, we issued a clean opinion on the basic financial statements. The district will be submitting their financial reports for the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting award. I did have the one finding to report on. Um, and as I noted throughout the presentation, the district does have a stable financial position. And lastly, I'd just like to note that the district does have excellent financial record keeping. This always helps every year just as part of an audit, getting it efficiently done and completed in time for a school board meeting in November. And also should provide confidence with all your interim financial reporting to the district and to the school board throughout the year. So at that, I'd open it up if there are any questions.
Any questions for our audit partner or for Bridget or the team?
You know, I don't have a question, but, um, I just would like to thank our, our finance department and Bridget and, and your team. Um, you know, again, we heard at the beginning of this how, you know, just like every other year, here we are in November getting our audit report. Um, and kind of gone through the same cycle, although things have been really challenging for everyone and, um, it's hard to, you know, some of the, the work to get done on a normal schedule and we've, we've accomplished that. And once again, a clean financial audit, which, um, has been a hallmark of this district. Um, so that is due to our great staff that manage, uh, manage the finances for us and report to us as a school board. Um, and it's our job to have oversight. So I just really appreciate, um, that, that clean report. So it helps us do our job. Thank you.
I, I think Sandra said it well. Uh, Jacqueline, thank you for making time to present this evening. Uh, Bridget and team, thanks for the work that you do all year long to ensure that we are in the position that we are in with regards to our financial presentation. Um, I'm going to move us to item four point two reopening update. And I believe Superintendent Lennox is in the hot seat.
Jonathan, can we get a motion to accept the audit report, please?
Oh, there is action. Good, good call, Bridget. So there is the audit, so I will entertain a motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
Di May?
Aye.
Classine?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye, Chair Weinhegen.
Aye, motion carries. Now we'll move to item four point two reopening update. Chris, you bought yourself like thirty seconds of time, but here we go.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. Thank you, uh, Jonathan. And, and tonight I do want to provide an update on the current status of our school learning models, uh, with a focus on the Minnesota safe learning model and specifically the decision-making process. Last month, um, I had a chance to provide an, an update that addressed a number of what we were getting to frequently asked questions, and I wanted to follow up at this meeting with some additional questions that have been coming forward. Specifically, people have been connecting to get a better understanding of how decisions are, are being made relative to choosing a learning model. So, uh, I wanted to take some time tonight and, uh, might as well start with the most common question, uh, which goes a little something like this. Uh, people will call and say, well, we heard that the decision to choose a learning model is up to local school districts, so why don't we just bring all of our kids back? Well, I need to tell you that, that the perception that schools in fact can operate independently of, of state guidance is simply not correct. As we communicated last week, M D E did release clarified guidance stating that schools can and should use local data in their decision-making. However, nowhere in that guidance does it state that schools can act independently of the Minnesota safe, uh, learning model. In fact, step five from the Minnesota state plan was highlighted in the clarified guidance by M D E last week. And, and that step says that if a school district or charter school is considering implementing a less restrictive learning model than what is required under the safe learning model guidance, it must then work with the regional support team to consult with local public health officials, the Minnesota Department of Health, or the Minnesota Department of Education as needed. It then goes on to say that the education commissioner retains statutory authority to order the transition from in-person instruction to distance learning if determined after consultation with the Minnesota Department of Health that in-person instruction is no longer safe due to concerns related to COVID nineteen. Now that clearly doesn't sound like school districts can do whatever they want. Uh, it does say that districts must follow the guidance in the Minnesota safe learning plan or meet with the regional support team and follow their recommendations. Um, if we don't follow that guidance, the commissioner can and has the authority to step in. And legally, when we checked with our team, uh, we've been advised that it is in our best interest to comply with that guidance or we open the district up to potential risk. Um, so that brings up a, a common generalization, uh, that goes along with that question and people have asked, well, if that's the case, then why are we the only district who? And they'll fill in the rest of that sentence with what they're experiencing. And I want to use that example to reinforce, uh, that school districts really don't have the autonomy that is being advertised. And, and I, and I want to do that by just providing a quick update on the learning models of our, our neighbors, our surrounding districts. So at this time, Anoka Henepin is actually in hybrid for their elementary students and distance learning for middle and high school. Centennial, hybrid for their elementary, distance learning for middle and high school. Columbia Heights, hybrid for elementary, distance learning for middle and high school. Fridley, hybrid at the elementary, distance learning for middle and high school. In Roseville, they're actually moving to distance learning for all levels. That would be effective November sixteenth. Spring Lake Park, hybrid for elementary, distance learning for middle and high school. And White Bear Lake is in hybrid for elementary and middle and distance learning, uh, at the high school. So as you can see, other than Roseville, who's actually being more restrictive, uh, the learning models of our surrounding districts are, are nearly identical. The reason for that is that we're all being given similar guidance and we're all expected to follow that guidance. So it's highly unlikely that you're going to see a school district that will fall into the category of the only district who. Um, we are all being guided by our regional support team. We are all using, uh, community as well as county data and being advised in very similar fashion. So most people then will go on and ask, well, if the choice of learning models is not up to the school district, then how is the decision made? Well, all along, we've been saying we're expected to start with county level data. And the recommended parameters from the Minnesota safe learning plan, uh, set twenty cases per ten thousand residents. They would recommend that we are in hybrid, uh, for all students. At thirty cases per ten thousand residents, secondary students are generally being asked to move to distance learning. And at fifty cases per ten thousand residents, all students, uh, then are being expected to move into distance learning. Now, if districts are willing to follow those expectations, there's no meeting necessary. You just move forward and implement the guidance from the Minnesota safe learning model. If a district wants to be less restrictive than those parameters, then they must meet with the regional support team. So as we've gone through this process, we've followed the guidance, we've messed with, uh, our regional team. In fact, uh, at our last meeting, we do appreciate, uh, them using their, their new scalpel approach that allowed us to stay in blended learning uh, at our middle schools. But I want to make no mistake, it's been made perfectly clear to us that as cases continue to rise, at some point, community spread will increase to a level where public health will outweigh the decision to keep students, uh, in person. Local data certainly will be considered, but significant community spread will result in a recommendation from, uh, the team and of public health officials to move our schools to distance learning. So, um, as we've already seen in neighboring districts, um, we expect that Mounds View will receive a similar recommendations as our case counts continue to rise in the community. So then the question is, what, what is our current COVID nineteen data? And where does that data come from? Well, school districts across the state get a weekly update from the Minnesota Department of Health. It comes on Thursday, so every Thursday we get an update for all counties in the state. Now, as I shared last, uh, meeting, remember this is a lagging indicator. It's actually two weeks prior because the, um, department won't use current week data. That, that's in progress. So not all the tests have come back. They don't have them all, all, uh, counted. They are using the week prior as preliminary. They're in the, in the process of always verifying that week prior. So they go back two weeks to say that's actually the official count they use for the state. So last Thursday, the Minnesota Department of Health, uh, set the Ramsey County case rates at thirty-four point oh seven. Now, uh, we talked about this at the work session. That number has been rising and we're watching it, it closely. We also get data directly from Ramsey County. So in addition to the public health data we get or the Department of Health, we also get Ramsey County data. And that data includes some of the same data that's provided by, uh, M D H. And it, it will confirm that, uh, the thirty-four point zero seven number as an example that's reported, the county will have that same data. But the county also provides preliminary data for the week just completed, so the unofficial week. And that's intended to let us know where we're headed with case counts in the county. The projected number for this Thursday, according to Ramsey County, is forty-one point nine. Now, given that, we expect a recommendation from a regional support team, uh, to move middle schools to distance learning. And we should know that officially by the, the end of that, the, this week, when we meet with the regional support team. So returning now back to the county data, people often say, well, sure, okay, Ramsey County case counts may be increasing, but the county's so big. Uh, I mean, it includes St. Paul. Uh, how does that really relate to what's happening, happening in our local communities and local cities? Well, remembering that the case count for the county, um, for this coming Thursday is projected to be forty-one point nine. Uh, here are their additional projections for our, our local cities. On Thursday, Arden Hills is projected to be forty-eight point six. Mounds View is projected to be forty-seven point one. Uh, New Brighton, fifty-five point nine. Now, North Oaks is at twenty-nine point six with an asterisk, and that asterisk means that their population is small enough that small numbers of cases can move that number quickly up or down. Uh, and Shoreview is projected to be at thirty-nine point four. So it's clear our core cities are now reflecting the significant community transmission. Um, and that is what we're getting directly from Ramsey County. By the way, people often ask, well, where is the city of St. Paul at? And the city of St. Paul is actually projected to be at thirty-eight point four on Thursday, which is lower than our local cities and actually lower than the county average. So, okay, they'll say, so community transmission is accelerating, but what impact is it actually having on our schools? It, is there an impact, um, to our, to our schools, to our classrooms and to what's happening, uh, here? And the short answer is yes. Uh, there's been a significant increase over the last week. Now, if you had asked me this two weeks ago, I would have said, no, you know, not really. We haven't seen a significant uptick. Uh, but recently that has started to have a significant impact for both students and staff in our schools. Across the district, we've started to see a steady increase in both positive COVID cases as well as quarantines that are taking place. And to give you a sense of just how quickly this has started to move, uh, let me share some numbers. If we go back to the middle of October, so from October fifteenth to the twentieth, we only had two positive cases. Now, this is staff and students combined and thirty-eight people quarantining. When you move to the next week, the twenty-first to the twenty-seventh, there were fifteen positive cases, seventy people quarantining. By the end of October into November, so the twenty-eighth to the third, we had twenty-four positive cases and a hundred and seventy-six people quarantining. And this week, the week we're currently in, uh, from November fourth to the tenth, we've had forty-three positive cases and two hundred and ninety-three people quarantining. That's, that's not cumulative, that's this week. So you can see it's having, um, a serious impact. And beyond the impact it's having on, on people's health, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, bring up that it, it's also not started to have a significant impact on our ability to staff our schools. Um, finding subs has become a serious issue. And that's true across all of our employee groups. I think normally people think about our classrooms and and certainly we look, uh, are looking for a teacher and parasubs to work directly with our students. But it doesn't matter if it's a classroom, uh, the lunchroom or a custodial position. When people learn that the sub is needed because of a positive COVID case or because someone's out quarantining because they've potentially been exposed, uh, they lose interest in filling those positions. Uh, this is a trend that's increased significantly over the last days. Appears that it's going to continue to be an issue as we move forward. And as we've checked with other local districts, this isn't just Mounds View, that is happening across the entire metro area. So then I'm usually asked, well, if case counts continue to rise, uh, and it's having this type of impact on our schools, uh, what's going to happen with elementary? Will, will elementary potentially be asked to move to distance learning at some point? And the short answer is yes. Uh, given the significant amount of community spread, we do expect that the recommendation from the regional support team would be to move our elementary schools to distance learning once we cross over that, that threshold, the parameter that was set for COVID nineteen, uh, case transmission, which is fifty cases per ten thousand residents. Uh, now I know a number of neighboring districts who have already met with the regional support team. Uh, they've been reviewing the, both the county and local data and are working to determine what their next steps will be with their elementary program. Uh, but they have reached out and foreshadowed that the recommendation seems to be that they move in the direction of distance learning at the elementary. So we're going to continue to watch the COVID data closely at both county and local level. Uh, we are meeting with our regional support team later this week, so we should have an answer uh, by end of week and will communicate to, uh, letting everyone know as early as possible uh, regarding any necessary decisions about learning plan transitions. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll wrap up the report. I, I hope the information helped answer at least some of the questions about how learning models are determined, what data we're using and how that decision-making process happens. Uh, our intention with all of this is to be transparent with the information, uh, to provide what we have, when we have it, and to clearly communicate how and why decisions are being made. Um, but I will say it's more apparent now than ever that there is no learning model that's going to satisfy everyone. As I talk to people when students aren't in person, uh, there are people who feel we're sacrificing public health when we move to distance learning. We, we hear from We, we hear from people who feel like we're sacrificing children's uh, education. So under these current conditions, uh, it's really tough to try to find a balance, and I don't know that there is a, a perfect model. Um, but in closing, I, I would like to thank all of our educators, our employees, and parents uh, of the Mounds View Public Schools. We just so appreciate everything uh, all of you have done to provide our students with the best educational experience uh, that we can possibly provide throughout these incredibly uh, difficult times. And with that, I'd just say thanks for the opportunity to provide this update, and, and with that, I will end my report.
Uh, Chris, thanks for that report. The board did have a chance to spend significant time last week in our work session um, grilling you on this and kind of asking questions and prepping you for this report. I do want to open the floor to any of my colleagues, should they have some um, additional thoughts on, on this topic.
I, I'd love to just um, make a few comments. Um, I, I really appreciate um, Chris, how you have reviewed for everyone the, the very intense process that we have gone through to try to find some flexibility um, and, and make a local decision. Um, and I think it's really, it has been incredibly frustrating for me as a local school board member, um, when we are told by, um, by the governor with all this messaging that it is a local decision, and that has actually really not been the case. And I, I appreciate how you have walked through that for our community. I think that's important to know. Um, I do think we are now, as you outlined, Chris, in the last two weeks at a place where even if we could make that decision on our own, right now, we are kind of forced into uh, because of staffing shortages, we, it is an operational, um, you know, impossibility right now to, to, to be open um, in a full, you know, even a hybrid model at our high school. But I do think as we move into, you know, um, hopefully get past this period of a significant community outbreak and look to reopen and get back into an in-person um, model as much as possible. I do really want to um, encourage my school board colleagues from across the state to really apply some, some, um, some pressure to, to, for the governor and the Department of Education and Department of Health to really give us as local school board members the flexibility that they say we have, because we don't have it. And I think we know our buildings best. Um, so I just appreciate everything you did to walk through that for our community. And I also want to point out, we as community members have the ability to stop the community spread, to slow it down, and that includes wearing a mask. Whether you agree with it or not, that is the best thing we can do to get our kids back in the buildings and keep our um, activities and our athletics going. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sandra. Let, let me uh, just say, I want to thank the board too, um, for your advocacy. I, I want the public to know that um, people haven't just sat back. Uh, Jim DeMay is our representative to AMSD. We've reached out to AMSD as um, an organization to support us in, in our work and, and making these decisions about learning models. Um, Sandra, I know you sat in on a call last week with MSBA uh, and the governor. And uh, just, just want people to know that the board has, has truly been advocates in this work and will continue to uh, provide feedback to not only the governor, um, but state officials uh, about this process and what we can do uh, to meet the educational needs of our kids moving forward.
And to note about the AMSD, that's the Association of Metro School Districts, is that uh, I've attended a number of meetings and discussions. I also attended the governor's call on Friday that, you know, amongst uh, school board members throughout the state, there's a lot of frustration with uh, the mandates, the lack of local control, that type of thing. But, you know, the reality, as Sandra had mentioned, that we're facing now is that the outbreak is pretty substantial. We're feeling it in the schools. We're seeing it in our staffing, that type of thing. And um, you know, it's uh, um, going to be a tough road going forward. But, you know, the desire, I think, of the administration and the school board, or at least I'll just speak for myself, is that in-person learning is by far preferable, by far preferable for um, our students and our staff. And uh, hopefully, um, you know, uh, the curve will bend. Sandra said, uh, you know, use your mask, be careful, those types of things. We'd really like to see the kids back in school. I think the most energetic thing I've seen on the school board, I miss seeing the kids. Seeing the kids, you know, at the front of the school board meeting was really exciting and got me revved up. And, you know, that's why we're here. So, thank you.
Um, I would just like to add uh, the, some of the parents that I talked to recently, um, talking about the um, presentation that you were going to give tonight, Superintendent Lennox, and some of the other things that uh, we're looking at and the constraints we're under. I think they really appreciate the uh, transparency. And I think um, as we move longer into the school year, uh, they're really becoming to understand how difficult it is to make these choices. And all of the things that go into it with uh, staff safety, not just teachers, but certainly custodians and all the other staff in buildings, um, as well as their students. So I think uh, putting out uh, more information and more communication um, is only going to help uh, everyone understand uh, what decisions we have to make when, when we have to make them. So thank you for that.
I just wanted to say one thing really quick. First of all, thank you, um, Chris. That's a lot of information. It's confusing. Like I said in our work session, I don't know if we're coming or going um, with these numbers, and it's, it's super confusing. But just also remind people to be kind. We're, we're just people. We're moms and dads. Our kids go to these schools. Our friends work in these buildings. Um, so we're doing the best we can with the information that we have. And um, everyone, all of us truly want the best for kids. We really do. We really, really do. Um, and we're just doing the best we can. So just please, keep that in mind. Um, and just, you know, be kind, be kind to us, be kind to the superintendent, be kind to your kids' teachers. Everyone's just doing the best they can.
Sean, I think that's a great sentiment uh, to end this topic on, and appreciate you carrying that forward. Um, I'll move to item five point one. If you didn't think the audit was fun enough, let's talk about some policy review, folks. So Superintendent Lennox, you're going to walk us through uh, some policy review.
Hi, I, I will do that again. Thank you, Jonathan. Um, this one, there's no actual action tonight by the school board. This is uh, just a report. But for the public, uh, last year, the school board completed a comprehensive review of all of our district policies. And as, as part of that work, a rotating three-year schedule was developed. And the intention of that schedule is to provide regular and ongoing review of district policies. Uh, when policies are identified as needing uh, revision or updates, they actually will go to a school board subgroup or committee of the whole, uh, where the board can discuss those changes. And once the uh, discussions have taken place, they come back then publicly for comment. And um, eventually, formal action would be taken to amend, update, or revise a policy at a public business meeting. But uh, for policies that are reviewed and no updates or revisions are recommended, administration simply brings those policies forward at a public business meeting to inform the public that the formal review has in fact taken place. Uh, this review will then be documented on the policy timeline, so the public can see when the most recent review of any policy uh, was last completed. And as a reminder to the public, all of our policies are available on our district website. So tonight, we are bringing forward only the policies from the Board Superintendent Association section as well as the Superintendent Limitations section, where no chart, uh, changes have been recommended. Um, again, uh, policies for which changes are being recommended, go to the subgroup and come back at a later time. Uh, but tonight, we're just highlighting the ten policies that have been reviewed with no change. Those policies are, uh, from the Board Superintendent Association section, uh, policies BA one, BA one hundred, and BA two hundred. Uh, those have been reviewed, no changes. From the Superintendent's Limitation uh, Policy Section, uh, we have policy SL one, SL one oh one, SL two oh one, SL three oh one, SL four oh one, SL four oh two, and SL seven oh one. Again, all of those have been reviewed, no changes. Uh, the complete list is also included in the school board packet this evening. Uh, again, no action necessary for the school board, uh, but these policies will now be updated as uh, reviewed as of this date. And with that, I will end my report.
Uh, Chris and team, thanks for your work on this and diligence. Um, as a policy governance board, this is really important. We drive most of our work based on these policies, and it's what we hold you and the organization accountable to. You know, I, I remember a couple of years ago when we got into this cadence of reviewing, um, we were dusting off some policies that hadn't been looked at for, you know, a dozen years or so. So really grateful that we're, we're in this cadence, that we're, we're doing this work and, and keeping things fresh and up to date. Um, with that, I'll move to item six point one, updates. Um, AFSD and Legislative, uh, Mr. DeMay, you provided a little bit of a snapshot earlier. Anything else to report?
Um, AMSD, I thought one statistics they mentioned was interesting is that, you know, last year, uh, levies and referendums passed in the state at about eighty-five percent. This year, they passed at about a fifty-five percent rate. Um, I did briefly, I, I mentioned that, you know, executive orders, mandates, local control, uh, you know, pretty substantial level of frustration uh, on a lot of things, but you know, we're all in the same boat. Um, another note is that uh, there will be a special session on Thursday. And it will likely extend the governor's emergency powers another month. And uh, uh, there really will, there's no plans to discuss any educational issues. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. It feels like these special sessions aren't so special anymore, but that's my own personal commentary. Um, Mary Jo, nine sixteen, and Ramsey County League?
Okay, um, at nine sixteen, um, we're, right now, the board is working on um, a selection of a search firm. Um, and after the first of the year, we are going to move into uh, a search for the next superintendent at Northeast Metro. Um, Connie Hayes is retiring at the end of June, so we'll, we'll be working on that. Um, and the Ramsey County League of Local Governments, this Friday from seven thirty to nine, is going to have, uh, again, one of the free monthly events. Um, anybody who uh, is a member, and by that, I mean even uh, cabinet members or some of their staff, if it's uh, if it works, and certainly board members and superintendents um, are invited to come to these. This one is uh, about age-friendly Ramsey County. And featured people will be Julia Wolf on Healthy Aging Initiative at the Ramsey County Public Health, and David Brosnahan, who is the Assistant Fire Chief and Emergency Manager in the city of Roseville. Currently, um, and we're also going to hear about organizations uh, current intersection with seniors and what they're presently hearing and doing with these issues. Uh, many cities have signed up so far, the Met Council, of course, the county and school boards. There's still time to register. It's virtual. It's free. Uh, seven thirty to nine this Friday. And then December, the annual December meeting, I'm not quite sure if we've determined the date, but David Schultz uh, will be talking about the election both locally and nationally. And he's always a great uh, presenter. So um, let me know if you're interested in that. I'll make sure you get the information. That's it.
Thanks, Mary Jo. It will take us to seven point one, school board member reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
I do. Uh, the Mounds View Schools Education Foundation will be having their flagship event, our ninth annual Rock the Schoolhouse this Saturday night. It's a virtual event this year, and the thing that we're really excited about is that um, uh, normally, when we hold it in person, we have a cap on the number of people who can attend, and it always sells out very quickly. And having it virtually this year, we can have lots and lots of people attend. Uh, seventy-five percent of the people who have already registered are new to the event. So we're really excited about lots more people hearing about what the foundation um, is doing. We're a nonprofit um, that uh, is committed to uh, raising funds to give back to our district and supporting our students. And this year, all of our efforts um, will be going to uh, the district to support students during this time of COVID learning specifically. So to find out more, head to the Mounds View Schools website and just search MVSEF, or you can search Rock the Schoolhouse, if that's easier to remember, and get um, all the information that you need to attend on Saturday night. Uh, if you'd like to, you can donate twenty dollars and be a part of the entire event, including an online auction. If you'd just like to view the event, you can sign up for free and get a link to the event and participate that way as well. So we're really excited about that for Saturday and hope to see a lot of you there.
I've already bid on an item.
I, I already got bid on a couple.
I might be bidding against you, Sandra.
Oh.
Anything else to report, Diane?
Yeah, I just wanted to um, thank Carol Camper, the principal over at Irondale. She held uh, two Q and A sessions um, yesterday afternoon as well as um, late um, afternoon, early evening. And it was great. It was nice to see people joining, just asking a lot of different questions as it relates to Irondale. So um, it sounds like she is going to look at doing these um, on a regular basis um, for parents to get more information. So.
Great, thank you.
Um, I, I'd like to, I'd like to just comment, um, as a little bit of a follow-up from the student, uh, the student recognition we had at the front end of the meeting. Um, you know, as a parent who, I've got two student athletes at Mounds View High School, I will just, I just want to, you know, my experience with those um, those events has been, you know, really great as far as uh, parents doing a really good job of social distancing, wearing masks. Um, the players just at the game, the football game on Friday night, I could hear um, the players on the sidelines and yelling to each other, you know, spread out, spread out. Um, so I think that they're, they're, they're really conscientious about um, you know, their role in, in keeping, keeping the um, the team safe. And I've just been really impressed with both how the players and the parents have been, um, how responsible they've been with this and really in a way to, you know, keep themselves uh, keep, keep those activities active and engaged, and hopefully, we can continue on with them. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandra.
Just wanted to say one thing quick, Jonathan. A quick thank you to the Nutrition Services staff. When I drive by Irondale on Fridays, um, they're out there handing out the lunches, waving to people, just having a really great time. So I just really want to thank them for um, for the work they're doing. And um, it's my son's golden birthday today, and he asked me if I could say happy birthday to him at the school board meeting. So I just want to say happy birthday to William.
Absolutely. Happy birthday, William. Yes, indeed. Is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.